Hello, hello, welcome to She's Connected. I thought I would just start our live off with a belly shot to show you. Belly's getting big and we also did some changes to our environment here. We got this daybed instead of the crib. And I'm feeling like I'm waddling around and it's crazy. Uh, anyways, this group is for that overwhelmed, stressed out mom who needs to pause and connect to God herself and her kids. I just gotta make sure all my buttons are in the right place again, like I say every time because I never know what Facebook's gonna do to me and if it's gonna change. Ahah, there's any button. I see it going, so here we are. I attended a webinar, a Zoom meeting thing about family films this week and oh, did it hit my heart. I am all about documenting and capturing my family's story and that's why I became a photographer. But this last couple of years, I've taken fewer photos and I've had fewer photo projects. And I've also been working on transferring like a lot of our home videos into a portal that can be accessed by our kids through an app. But this process takes forever. And so when I sit down to do things with photos or videos, I choose the video thing because I want to get them all in there. But then that means I'm not like organizing my photos as much as what I used to. And it's really hitting me right now. I think because I watched that um, or went to that meeting about family films and I was just like, oh my goodness. Um, the video process takes a long time because I have to do each video separate and then I have to log it and it's like really long and tedious and I don't want to sit by my computer in my chair for like long stretches of time right now. And so it's been really frustrating to me uh, not to get as many photos as I used to and then not even have that progress on the videos. So I've been struggling a little bit in this family film meeting, um. They shared some videos and it really got me thinking about the time that it takes to like organize photos and videos. And it is a long process sometimes, but it's so worth it. I hear so many people talk about their phone being full of photos. But then what are they gonna do with those photos? What do they want those photos to be in the future? Like, are you taking photos on your phone because you want your kids to see them when they get older? Well, then technology changes and you've got to make sure you back up stuff and all the things. It is such a part of my family legacy that I want to leave to my children. So I need to remember to keep taking those photos. Keep coming up with those photo projects and videos of my kids and especially, especially after this meeting. More photos and videos of me with my kids. My kids are gonna want to see um, our interaction and they're gonna wanna see me in them. So oftentimes I take photos and videos of my kids. But it's me behind the camera and I really need to get in the frame with my kids more. And um, I thought about making a family film of Hazel moving out, but I just didn't have that energy at the time and now that event is over. It's over and done. I did take some photos with my phone though, so we do have something to document it. But I guess this is my reminder to you to take photos and then do something with them. A couple months ago, I took Sydney on a photo shoot for her senior pictures and I was gonna share this photo with you. This is one that I took of her and surprisingly, or I'm so excited, I actually printed this photo and I got it put up on my photo wall and it's amazing. And I found it very interesting that my kids, they didn't see me put the new photo in and they noticed it. It was a change on our wall and they were like, oh, when did you put Sydney's photo in there? And um, it matters to our kids too. The photos that are on your walls and around your home, they see them, they recognize them and it builds their self-esteem and it makes them feel like they belong and there's a long list of things that it does. But anyways, that was just one photo that I'm sharing here and um, I'm just excited that I actually did get a photo project done. These senior photos and then printing it and getting it put into a frame. I love updating our framed photos. It's just so fun to see my kids um, growing up, but also it's fun seeing those photos of them when they're little too. So anyways, let me know in the comments where you're watching from, whether you're here live or on that replay. I am Cherry, mom of nine plus baby on the way. Like I showed my belly earlier. Baby is thirty-three weeks. I can't believe it. It's as big as a junior tennis racket or a celery stalk. I'm in Springfield, Missouri, inspiring families and moms like you to live a life connected to God. And this week's topic, we are talking about this JXP experience, this Jesus experience in Acts. Excuse me, and it's called impulse. Do you ever have impulses? Webster's dictionary says an impulse is a sudden spontaneous inclination to some unusually, no, to some usually unpredicted action. So it's not your planned day. I feel like moms do this all the time. Um, just because we have to act out on impulse. You have a kid who has spills a bowl of cereal and milk is everywhere. You have to clean it up. This is an impulse to clean it up. Or a toilet exploding and bubbling over, you have to act pretty quick. But um, maybe not those. And I maybe not want them to focus on the things that just happened to you, but the things, the impulses that you have inside of you. So the Holy Spirit talking to you. Oh, Tina's here today from Michigan. Hello, Tina. It's good to have you here live. Thank you for posting in the comments too, because I think that pushes it out to more people in the group and they see that we're live. So that's awesome. But the Holy Spirit, was the Holy Spirit um, speaking to your heart? And that could be an impulse? And that's what our topic today is called. So let's just dive in. Welcome to High Five Friday. High fives to you. You made it through another week. How did you practice following Jesus this week? Now, this is the last time I'm gonna share the practices for this material. Here we are. We have reading, daily reading. We have missional impulse or activating the Holy Spirit. Shared meals, give good away, talk about what Jesus is doing. Those are our practices and this is the last time you're gonna see them. So there you go. Let me know in the comments. What practice did you experience this last week and how did it go for you? Um, how did it go for me? I guess the most impactful practice for me this week was communicating with the Holy Spirit. Since this is our last week of JXP material, I've been really trying to listen to the Holy Spirit for what's next. I thought I had a plan of what we were gonna do next and then when I started reading about that topic, the Holy Spirit changed my mind, changed my heart, I guess. So then I had to research something else and I had to hone it in a bit. Because when I dive into research, I start finding all these good things to share and then I have like eleven weeks of content and we don't have eleven weeks. I have to be realistic about what is gonna happen in next month. We are having a baby. I'm gonna have a newborn. Our lives are gonna get woo, flipped around and all that stuff. So I have to plan and prepare for that and I didn't want to um, hinder the group either. I didn't want to just pick three little things from my eleven week thing and share it. I was like, I, I need to come up with something else or God, what do you want to speak to these people? What do you want to speak to me? I think that was what's, what was amazing in this experience. But um, listening to the Holy Spirit is, is an amazing practice, spending time with God, all that stuff. It's Tina said, listen to Jesus's way. So that's awesome. Wow, we were both like listening. Okay, so for this week, our last week in the JXP material, we're heading into Acts chapter eight. The persecution of the church. It continues. If you remember, in chapter one, the apostles were told to be witnesses. And not just witnesses where they lived, they were told to be witnesses in Jerusalem, Judea, Samaria, and the ends of the earth. They were told to go out and be witnesses. Um, once the Holy Spirit came on them. And so far, in Acts, they've stayed put in Jerusalem. And we'll see in chapter eight that it seems that the opposition and the persecution kind of scattered the believers to go beyond Jerusalem. So we could say that the persecution of believers is bad, but it also sent the apostles out where they were supposed to go. So it's all part of his plan. You know, we are not in control. God has got this thing. He knows what's going on and he allows things to happen to push you in different directions. And that's what happened here. Many of the events throughout Acts can feel like we're merely reading like historical stories. This happened, that happened, then this. But this is the beginning of Jesus's story spreading across the world. And that's what God's will is, God's plan. He wants his kingdom to grow and he told us to go out and spread the word. And this is the beginning of that. We talked about the stoning and death of Stephen in chapter seven. And chapter eight starts with Stephen's burial. It goes on to talk about people trying to hurt the church. And there was a man named Saul trying to destroy the church and kill everyone who believed in Jesus. But the amazing part was the apostles went out anyway. And everywhere the believers were scattered, they told people the good news. Even though they could be killed, I, it's hard for me to wrap my head around that. If you are threatened with death, if you say this or do this and you go and say that and do that, like that's crazy. Ah, do you think that the people in Acts chapter eight had any idea they were part of such a big movement? This was the beginning of the church and people across the world coming to Jesus. And they lived in one city, in one place, in these little groups of cities. Um, if I go out into my neighborhood and start something, I probably would not think that the whole country's gonna end up doing it. But sometimes that happens, kind of like, let's say TV shows like Survivor or Big Brother. Do you think that they knew that these shows were gonna be like long lasting and as big when they first started? I don't know. I mean, it is TV. They want big ratings. But I don't think they understood how big it was going to get when they first started. Those TV shows have been going for so many years. I can't even believe it sometimes. I'm not like a super fan or anything. I don't watch it every year or every season or whatever they do, but they are like over and over and over again, every year, there's people talking about Survivor and Big Brother. They have diehard followers. And then there's another story. We start off pregnant. I got this little shelf here now. With all these hopes and dreams for our babies and our families, we have all these thoughts about our family legacy and then life happens. Sometimes we have to give up dreams or hold off our desires. And our kids, they're unique. They have their own personalities. They might have different ideas about what their future holds than what we hoped for them when they were little. So we can have it both ways. We can think, oh no, well, actually I did think. I was not gonna have. I never thought I was gonna have this many kids. Um, at the max, we were like four, that'd be great. But God has a different story for us, filled with many more kids. And then you can come to the table and say, I want a huge family and then have trouble with infertility. Sometimes the things we plan or hope for don't actually happen. And do you think that the people in Acts thought their daily interactions were sacred? Oh man, I mean, I'm sure they struggled. Stephen knew that Jesus's way is the way. Yeah, that is awesome, Tina. Thank you for sharing that. He was so right on, filled with the Holy Spirit, leaning into what God had for him. And that's how, that's how I wanna be. That's how we want to be in our families. So we can look to Stephen as a being that example. And it caused it, well, it didn't cause his death. I mean, kind of. But he, his life ended and our lives are gonna end. And hopefully we have a long life on earth and we're able to be that example longer than Stephen, but if we um, if we have a short life like him, we want it to be living in Jesus's way. So that's awesome. Thank you for sharing. Uh, these apostles, I'm sure they struggled. I don't know, it doesn't talk about Stephen's struggle because he was so filled with the Holy Spirit and knew what he had to do. Um, but I know I struggle. So I can imagine these apostles trying to preach the good news and then having opposition and persecution and maybe doubting a little bit. They had such great news about Jesus and they knew it could change lives. But you could also get killed if you talk about it. So that had to be tough. Does the mission of Jesus feel epic while you're living it out? So these apostles, I feel like they lived with Jesus. They knew there was something here. But what about you? What about me? Do we really feel like our life is epic for Jesus? We're slaving in the kitchen to provide meals for our kids or at least spending time to make sure that there is food in the house for our families. We're tending to a mountain of laundry and an overflowing sink every day. It does not feel sacred. Uh, and I think that's okay. If we don't feel that way, it's okay. But I want you to look at it in a new way. We're cleaning up mess after mess and raising little humans. It does not feel epic. Or like we're doing anything for God's kingdom. Sometimes I feel like I'm not doing anything for God's kingdom. And this is a lie. It's just plain, flat out a lie. Everything that your hands touch throughout the day is an act of worship to Him. Motherhood is beyond epic and sacred. It fuels the next generation of believers. Your day matters to God and His kingdom. We aren't just focused on today and one person. We are focused on our kids' hearts, our family, and then it spreads because our family gets bigger, our family grows, our family gets shot out. These are our arrows going out. At least that's what God has stirred in my heart. Um, my children are His army and I'm doing the best job I can to raise them to go and do that work. So what I do is meaningful, what you do is meaningful. Now back to Samaria, we watch in Acts eight, it talks about Philip. Philip interacts with two different people. One is a sorcerer who has a clunky beginning to his life of faith and the other is a wealthy eunuch from Ethiopia. Now Philip interacts with each of these people. And when you read Acts eight, you'll see that the Holy Spirit begins to speak directly to Philip and quite a powerful story plays out. Now the whole chapter explains both stories and both heart conditions. So read the whole thing to understand more. But we are going to focus on verses thirty and thirty-one and that lectio divina practice, reading it three times through with our head, our heart, our hands. So let's just, I guess, dive into that scripture. This is Acts chapter eight, verses thirty and thirty-one. So Philip ran toward the chariot. He heard the man reading from Isaiah the prophet. This was the Ethiopian man. Philip asked, do you understand what you are reading? And the man answered, how can I understand? I need someone to explain it to me. Then he invited Philip to climb in and sit with him. So what does this make you think? Now, one of the questions that I have is how bold of Philip to do what he's supposed to do, to come across this man and then to interrupt this man who was in his own space, reading by himself in his chariot. That's just crazy. If I was out and about in, in the public and I overheard someone sitting in a chair reading or on a bench reading, I wouldn't stick my nose in and start asking them questions about what they're reading and if they understand it. So wow, way to go, Philip. Now the second time reading through, we're going to think with our hearts and our feelings, I guess. So Philip ran toward the chariot. He heard the man reading from Isaiah the prophet and Philip asked, do you understand what you were reading? And he answered, how can I understand? I need someone to explain it to me. Then he invited Philip to climb in and sit with him. What does this make you feel? Now I start processing this from the other side. The man who could have turned Philip away. It could have been upset that Philip was asking in this, but his heart was soft. He wanted to understand. He wanted to be taught. He was ready to hear of the good news. That's awesome. So now the third time through, we're gonna think about uh, what we can do. You know, we're gonna read it with our hands. What action can we take? So Philip ran toward the chariot. He heard the man reading from Isaiah the prophet. And Philip asked, do you understand what you are reading? And he answered, how can I understand? I need someone to explain it to me. Then he invited Philip to climb in and sit with him. So how can you apply this to your life today? Let me know in the comments, you know, what's coming up for you? What can you do? Oh, Tina says we all need to understand. And sometimes scripture is not easy to understand. So how can we understand it if we read it and it's confusing? We can come and gather together and get everybody's opinions. We can listen to preachers, pastors, priests, people who have studied it for a long time. And I think that's what we're doing here or that's what the Ethiopian person is doing here. He is gaining knowledge from someone else. And sometimes that's great, sometimes not so great because if you get a person who doesn't understand it themselves or who is speaking falsely or something like that, it could kind of hinder you. But the biggest thing is the Holy Spirit. You've got the Holy Spirit with you. And if you continue to press into God and ask Him when you are reading the scriptures, He can speak to you. And then we have each other too. So that's awesome. I think the things that are coming up for me are the things that I mentioned earlier. I want to be that helpful person like Philip. And I also want to have a soft heart, ready to listen and learn and understand more of God, just like Tina was saying in the comments. I do wanna understand His word. And so I want to have that soft heart towards Him and what He has to say to me. And then that also takes effort. I am a busy mom. I have a very long to-do list and I'm also pretty tired. So reading His word sometimes gets pushed to the side. And that's okay. I guess I want to encourage you, if you are struggling with actually reading the Bible, it doesn't have to be that way. You don't have to get out the book and spend an hour in it. But you do have to get it into you somehow. I've been reading lots of other books that reference the Bible. I've listened to podcasts. I've gone to Bible studies and meetings with people. And you can find things that work in your schedule. You can even do Bible studies with your kids, even when they're like two. And when they're teenagers. I'm always asking my teens, what God spoke to them that day? What, what did your heart, what stirred in your heart? When you're, they'll start talking about something that they did at school or in some class and I was like, well, what did God say to your heart in that moment? Um, we can come together and talk about what Jesus is doing in our life. And just hanging out with people sometimes can stir up emotions and feelings that God has pressed on our heart that week. Um, even not necessarily complaining, but talking about the things that you're struggling with can really help other people um, glean from God. And then it gives them that opportunity to be able to share with you what's happened in their life and maybe give you advice. I see in mom groups all the time. They're asking questions about what should I do about this and what should I do about that? And a lot of times, they get so many comments that it's like too much or a lot of times, they don't get the comments that I think they really need. I don't know how to explain that one, but someone like put something in a group question and then other people were commenting on it and I was like, I don't think they're really answering you. I don't think they understood your question. And sometimes we don't understand the answer either. But that takes that pause, connect, get realigned with what God has for you and your day and then be able to discern what other people are saying. Um, mom groups are awesome because they're communities for moms and I think we all need that community. But sometimes you can get some negative comments. If you post something and some people say that that's wrong or that's bad or you shouldn't have done that. And then it makes you feel like you're less and that's not good because we're here to uplift each other. That's what I wanna do. Uplift you, you uplift others. It's just awesome. So a thankful heart is a happy heart. Um, I'm laughing because Madame Blueberry- Um, I'm laughing because Madame Blueberry says this, this Madame Blueberry is a Veggie Tale character. If you know of Veggie Tales, you might not, cause it's quite old now. But um, these little vegetables that talk about God. A cartoon from uh, back in the day. But anyways, she said, a thankful heart is a happy heart. And we all want these happy hearts. We wanna be able to share the good news of Jesus in a happy way. So if you would like to sign up for an email series that reminds you to be grateful, put great in the comments. And Tina says that God uplifts her. That is awesome. So Tina, can you tell me, maybe give me some examples of, like, how does he uplift you really? Like, is it when you are hearing his word? Is it when you are struggling? Is it when you notice the blessings? Cause that's what I'm talking about right now, that gratitude, gratefulness, being thankful for things. Um, I just found out that I need to go to a specialist. And this is because of my age during pregnancy. I went to the specialist, specialty appointment and they're doing non-stress tests and they're making sure that the baby's fine, which is great. And I get to hear the heartbeat. And uh, sometimes they're gonna be doing ultrasounds. But what I didn't know is I'd have to go every week. I have such a busy family. We don't have a van, so we have to share vehicles with ki- older kids. And putting these weekly appointments in my schedule was quite difficult for me. And I started to kinda complain about it and I was kinda nervous about how it was all gonna work out. And when I, you cannot take your kids to these appointments. And so that was another thing that concerned me, like, okay, so who's gonna be with the youngest kids during that time? Cause I have to drive there. I have the appointment is like forty-five minutes. And then the drive home, this is like two hours out of the day. How am I gonna schedule this in? And so I started freaking out a little bit. And then when I was in the non-stress test, they put these things on your belly and you get to hear the baby's heartbeat. And then they're tracking the, the heart going up and down and all that stuff. And I just had to remind myself that I get to hear my baby. And I get to see my baby. And that's the blessing in it. Is it worth it to know that she's doing well? Yes, we're gonna cut off the time, make the time to go to these appointments. Ah, thank you Tina for sharing when I need to be uplifted and grateful for it. Hmm. It's amazing. God is so good. And he can turn any crazy circumstance into something special. So this is the last week of our JXP material and we are moving on. We are not gonna be talking about God's presence, cause I just got too much good stuff to share with you about that. So that's probably gonna move to later after the baby's here and all that stuff. But we do have about four weeks between now and when we share videos like we did in the summertime. So I shared some videos, a video series done by Gather Moms, I think it was called. Now I'm blanking on it, but um, they have another series that they did for mom struggles, I think is what it was. And so we're gonna be doing that during the holiday season and when baby is born and uh, after baby's born. So that's that series there. But we have about four weeks until then. And I was like, what are we gonna talk about? And I started writing a series of lives, talking about his strength. I mean, right now I feel huge. I feel like I'm waddling. I feel like I can't even bend down and pick things up. I feel like um, I don't get stuff done during the day. And Ted will message me and I'll be like, I had so much to do and I feel like I got nothing done. And he's just like, you are growing a baby. You are doing so much. It doesn't matter if this gets cleaned. It doesn't matter if our laundry gets done, we'll figure it out, which has been awesome to hear. But at the same time, inside, sometimes my brain goes a little crazy thinking I have this list of to-dos and I cannot even move or whatever. Or I'm moving so slow. I feel like I'm moving slow. Oh, but anyways, okay. So I feel weak, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And I know that doesn't matter to God, because he is strong. And if I continue to lean on him, then in my weakness, he's strong. And that's all that matters. And I can gain strength from him. So I started reading about that. And that's what we're gonna be talking about, his strength. So I hope you can get excited like me about his strength. Because then you realize that it's not about what you can do. It's about what he does. And so we can all like come together and learn about his strength a little bit more. And that is next week. We're starting that series. So I hope to see you next Friday at twelve thirty central. That's one thirty eastern time. In the comments, come in like Tina. Help uh, type in those comments and uh, ideas and thoughts. And be here with me while we go live to talk about his strength. Happy connecting, everyone, and have a great weekend.